Good evening. The June 13th, 2017 Regular Board Meeting of the Mentor Exempt Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 331 3.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Tuttle.
Here.
Ms. Jisling.
Present. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 13th, 2017 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempt Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System, Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address questions to the president. And this meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Spectrum Cable Channel 96.96 in Mentor and 96.22 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor, Ohio. Please place your mobile phones on silent mode during the meeting. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes from the May 24th, 25th, May 30th, and June 6th meetings?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Deb Stain, I was not in attendance for two of those meetings.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes. Lisa, Hiller, Hoynes, and Miller, four names that define our district's transition from its historic past to a state-of-the-art, modern institution. Mr. Miller, you have played a key role in that transformation. Today is a time for heartfelt thanks and a fond farewell as you head home to Cincinnati. We know that Lakota is welcoming you with open arms, but we are sad to say goodbye. Remember, once a card, always a card, applies to you and your whole wonderful family. We know that the technology that makes blended learning soar will also be a way for us to stay connected. And in your stead, we welcome Mr. Bill Porter as our interim superintendent. The 7,700 children in our community are in excellent hands. Mr. Porter is a highly respected administrator and educator with 29 years of experience. Mentor Public Schools won't miss a beat as we move forward seamlessly to continue offering a high-quality education for every child. And now we have a hearing of the public on agenda items. Thank you. And now the superintendent's report and recommendations.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of consent agenda items 5A1 and 5A2.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mr. Tuttle.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Thank you. We start tonight's recognition with two middle school athletes who've qualified for our state track competition. Mr. Porter, along with Mr. Tuttle, will make the presentation.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. Tonight, we are able to celebrate a first. The Ohio High School Athletic Association conducted its first-ever State of Ohio Track Meet for middle school students. We are proud to say that two of our student athletes qualified for the meet and competed near Columbus back on May 13th. When I call your name, please come up to the podium to get your certificate, and then I would invite you to shake hands with our board members. And we would also invite the coaches to come forward if they are here as well. First, qualifying for states in high jump, Eric Martimus from Ridge Middle School. And Eric's coach was Ms. Katie Hartrann from Ridge Middle School. And then placing at states in the 100 and 200 meter and actually winning states in the long jump for middle school level, Paige Floria from Shore Middle School. And I would invite up Paige's coach, Ms. Brienne Horofsky, from Shore Middle School, if you are here.
Very proud of you. Well done.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Next, we get to recognize the state champion Mentor High School Science Olympiad team. Mr. Feticch, along with Mr. Tuttle, will make the presentation.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board of Education, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. Thank you again for allowing me to share a few of the great things that are happening at Mentor High School. I'd like to call Mr. Ramsey and Mr. Langham up here. I'm going to allow these two to present our team, but I do have to, you know, Mentor High School has a rich tradition of academics, as we all know, and Mr. Ramsey and Mr. Langham and our students have brought us the first state championship in Science Olympiad history. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
This is not an easy accomplishment. You have to excel, not in one event or two events, but in 23 events. This year, our team shattered the previous school record. Think golf. Previous school record was 107 points, typically maybe 140 points. This year, the team scored 89 points in their 23 events. It's an amazing accomplishment, and they have to do well all across the board. We were competing against a Cincinnati school mason that was doing better than us, better than us, better than us, but then they crashed in a couple of events. And so they fell from first to third place behind our friends from Solon. And so they didn't even make it to Nationals this year. But we're very proud of our students. They work, starting in September through the school year. They track how many hours of study and preparation they do. So let's present the awards to these. Mr. Lang, would you like to say something?
Oh, no.
All right. While we're waiting, we can have the captains come up and present the trophy from Nationals. They won the DuPont Enterprise Trophy, nationally recognized as a rising star on the national stage.
Oh, nice.
We could have Nicole Davis present that to the board.
Nice. Wow.
It's a trophy.
It's a serious trophy.
Very proud of you. Very proud of you.
Beautiful trophy. Enjoyed it. Yeah.
A number of students are on summer break. Do we see Sonya in the crowd? I don't think I see Sonya. Megan, is Megan here?
Mr. Ramsey, could you go to the microphone so people can hear the names? They might not be able to hear it. Liz is asking you to do that.
Sonya, Megan Rumpenel, Josh Ashby, Gianna Barone, Eric Berezny. I see Eric out there. Congratulations. Kayla Berezny.
Very proud of you.
Congratulations. Dimitri Bibadakis. Kristi Buess. And we know that Allison Carey was unable to attend this evening. Michael Chen. And then Thomas Crumice. Quinn Daly. Andrew Davis.
Very proud of you.
Corinne Duffy is unable to attend. Zach Duncan. Gillian Junch. Wayne Ho. Kemi Kasabala. Brian Kilkeny. Jessica Languth. If you've seen the artwork on our T-shirts and hoodies, we thank Jessica for that. Alex Lee. And then Kylie Lindville. Sarah Mains. Peter Mansberger.
Very proud of you.
Alex Murray.
Very proud of you.
Chris Nguyen. John Nikle.
Very proud of you.
Tommy Odo. Love Patel. Michael. Josh Pugh. Josh Pugh. All right. Jennifer Rowan. Jared Simcoe. Nicole Smike. Unable to attend, Jack Tavano, Quinn Tesney, Nicole Wallstrom. Lynn Shu.
These last are for our two coaches. Congratulations to our Science Olympiad.
Our 2017 state champions.
Thank you. Congratulations again. Also, a quick shout-out to all the coaches at all the levels.
Thank you so much.
If I have the opportunity, a lot of nights, doesn't matter what night, when other events are going on to walk through the high school, and it seems like there are Science Olympiad teams practicing everywhere, and it certainly pays off, so congratulations again. At this point, the high school also saw student athletes competing at the state level once again this year. Mr. Casella will join Mr. Feticch and Mr. Tuttle for that presentation.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson, Mentor High School track teams continued their tradition of success this past spring as we had nine student athletes qualified to compete at the state track and field meet at Ohio State University. In order to qualify for state competition, they had to finish in the top four placers in their specific events at both the district and then regional competitions leading up to the state meet. Each one of these student athletes represented Mentor High School with great skill and sportsmanship throughout the state tournament, and it's my pleasure to congratulate them. At this time, would our head girls' track coach, Mr. Bob Burwald, and boys' head track coach, Mr. Bill Dennison, join me, please? I'd like to bring up each one of our athletes and then highlight our placers at the state meet. In addition to their certificates that they're receiving from the Board of Education, the athletes will also be receiving their state certificates from the Ohio High School Athletic Association, and several of them achieved their academic All-Ohio certificates as well. First of all, Matt Bull, who competed in the 800-meter run and the 4x8-meter relay. Is that here? No. Tyler Furst competed in the 4x800-meter relay. Nick Kozlowski competed in the 4x800-meter relay. Marshall Stewart also competed in the 4x800-meter relay. Anna Evans competed in the girls' 4x800-meter relay. Emma Lane competed in the 4x800-meter relay, the 4x400-meter relay, and the 400-meter run. Sarah Lane, who competed in the 4x800-meter relay and the 4x400-meter relay. Samantha Meyer competed in the 4x800-meter relay and the 4x400-meter relay. And Kayla Zidanowicz, who competed in the 4x400-meter relay. As you can see, we were pretty busy in Columbus, and they were also very successful. Matt Bull finished 10th in the state in the 800-meter run. Our girls' 4x400-meter relay team qualified for the finals, finishing 5th in the state. And Emma Lane made the finals in the Open 400 and finished 3rd in the state. And by doing that, she also set the new school record of 54.81. So congratulations to all of them.
Another great year.
Thank you, Coach.
Thanks for a great year.
Congratulations again.
Last, but certainly not least, it's my pleasure to introduce several young men who've completed the requirements for Eagle Scout with the Boy Scouts of America. Would Perry Beer, Joseph Kynath, Robert Majikas, and Jonathan Pachasko please come to the podium? These gentlemen have committed to living their lives by the principles of the Scout Oath and Scout Law. Over the course of their time in the Scouts, they have also earned at least 21 merit badges in the following categories: First aid, citizenship in their country, their nation, and the world; communication, cooking, personal finance, emergency preparedness, environmental science, or sustainability, personal management, swimming, hiking or cycling, camping, and family life. Please join me in giving them a round of applause.
Karen. Very proud of you.
Congratulations, what an accomplishment.
Karen.
Congratulations.
Very proud of you.
Congratulations, it's a good accomplishment. Congratulations.
Very proud of you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It is tough following all those students, especially Eagle Scouts, but I'm going to do my best. Madam President, members of the board, three weeks ago, we celebrated the graduation of our high school seniors. Tonight, we celebrate a different kind of graduation, that of our 2016-2017 retirees. It is with mixed emotions that we recognize our retiring faculty and staff. We want to thank them for the many years of dedicated service. 1,123 years in all, that's 529 years for certified and 594 years for classified, and wish, gee, she's right, and wish them good health and happiness in their retirement. Mrs. Burnett and Mr. Tuttle will be joining me. As I call your name and say a little bit about you, please come forward and please remain up front until all of the names have been called. And we're going to start tonight with Mary Lynn Beirstat. Mary Lynn, if you could come on up. She is retiring after 31 years of teaching and recently as an art teacher at Mentor High School. Congratulations, Mary Lynn. Next, Denise Borkus. There she is. Denise is retiring with 31 years of teaching and recently as a 3rd grade teacher at Orchard Hollow Elementary. Congratulations, Denise. Next up is Dan Burns. Is Dan here tonight? Dan is retiring after 35 years of teaching and recently as a chemistry teacher at Mentor High School. So we'll give Dan a round of applause. Next up is Carolyn Grasso. Carolyn is retiring after 20 years of service and recently as a 3rd grade teacher at Fairfax Elementary. Congratulations, Carolyn. Next up, unable to attend is Carla Caris. Carla is retiring after 32 years as a teacher and most recently as a media tech teacher at Garfield Elementary. Congratulations to Carla. Cheryl Lan. Cheryl is retiring after 25 years of teaching Family and Consumer Science and most recently at Mentor High School. Congratulations, Cheryl. Cindy Loma. Cindy is retiring after 32 years with Mentor Schools, most recently as a 2nd grade teacher at Hopkins Elementary. Congratulations, Cindy. Barb Luzar, who's unable to attend tonight. Barb is retiring after 31 years of teaching, most recently as a 3rd grade teacher at Garfield Elementary. Congratulations to Barb. Deidra Meehan. Deidra is retiring after 38 years of service and recently as an intervention specialist at Sterling Morton Elementary. Congratulations. Next up is Kristi Mensch. Kristi is retiring after 31 years of teaching, most recently as a media tech teacher at Fairfax Elementary. Congratulations, Kristi. Jane Miller. Jane is retiring after 31 years of teaching, most recently as a science teacher at Ridge Middle School. Congratulations, Jane. Colleen Minot. Colleen is retiring after 30 years of service, most recently as a 3rd grade teacher at Lake Elementary. Congratulations, Colleen. Richard Peterson. He's retiring after 20 years of service as a social studies teacher at Mentor High School. Congratulations, Dr. Peterson. Diane Rhodes was unable to attend today. Diane is retiring after 20 years of teaching as a PE teacher, most recently at Hopkins Elementary. Congratulations to Diane. Joe Udivek. Joe is retiring after 30 years as an industrial arts teacher, most recently at the high school. Congratulations to Joe. Jackie Erman. Jackie is retiring after 35 years as a psychologist for the district, most recently at Brentmore Bellflower Elementary. Congratulations to Jackie. Margaret Watson, who's unable to attend tonight. Margaret is retiring after 32 years in education, most recently as the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services with Mentor Schools. Congratulations to Margaret. And Nancy Zappé, who's also unable to attend, is retiring after 25 years as a music teacher, most recently at Brentmore Elementary. Congratulations. All right, we're going to move on to classified staff. If these people could come up as I announce your names. First up is Margaret Alessi. Margaret is retiring after 14 years as a classroom assistant in the district. She has worked at several of our elementary schools, with her last few years in our preschool program at Ridge Middle School. Congratulations, Margaret. Next up is Gail Astrop. Gail is retiring, she's unable to attend tonight. She's retiring after 30 years in the district. Gail has worked as a classroom assistant and most recently as a library assistant at Shore Middle School. So we congratulate Gail. Victoria Berry. Is Victoria here? Victoria is retiring after 20 years as a classroom assistant at Orchard Hollow. Congratulations, Victoria. Linda Burkhardt. Linda is retiring after 25 years. Her time has been spent as a classroom assistant at Sterling Morton and most recently as a secretary at Mentor High School. Congratulations to Linda. Jane Miller. Jane is retiring after 31 years of teaching, most recently as a science teacher at Ridge Middle School. Congratulations Jane. Colleen Minat. Colleen is retiring after 30 years of service, most recently as a 3rd grade teacher at Lake Elementary. Congratulations Colleen. Richard Peterson. He's retiring after 20 years of service as a social studies teacher at Mentor High School. Congratulations Dr. Peterson. Diane Rhodes was unable to attend today. Diane is retiring after 20 years of teaching as a PE teacher, most recently at Hopkins Elementary. Congratulations to Diane. Joe Udivek. Joe is retiring after 30 years as an industrial arts teacher, most recently at the high school. Congratulations to Joe. Jackie Erman. Jackie is retiring after 35 years as a psychologist for the district, most recently at Brentmore Bellflower Elementary. Congratulations to Jackie. Margaret Watson, who's unable to attend tonight. Margaret is retiring after 32 years in education, most recently as the Assistant Superintendent of Student Services with Mentor Schools. Congratulations to Margaret. And Nancy Zappé, who's also unable to attend, is retiring after 25 years as a music teacher, most recently at Brentmore Elementary. Congratulations. Alright, we're gonna move on to classified staff. If these people could come up as I announce your names. First up is Margaret Alessi. Margaret is retiring after 14 years as a classroom assistant in the district. She has worked at several of our elementary schools, with her last few years in our preschool program at Ridge Middle School. Congratulations Margaret. Next up is Gail Astrop. Gail is retiring, she's unable to attend tonight. She's retiring after 30 years in the district. Gail has worked as a classroom assistant and most recently as a library assistant at Shore Middle School. So we congratulate Gail. Victoria Berry. Is Victoria here? Victoria is retiring after 20 years as a classroom assistant at Orchard Hollow. Congratulations Victoria. Linda Burkhardt. Linda is retiring after 25 years. Her time has been spent as a classroom assistant at Sterling Morton and most recently as a secretary at Mentor High School. Congratulations to Linda. Unable to attend tonight, but we still want to recognize Debbie Butcher. Debbie is retiring after 18 years as a We Care instructor at Hopkins. So we congratulate Debbie. Mike Collins, unable to attend, is retiring after 20 years as a custodian for Mentor Schools, spending most of his time at Mentor High School. Congratulations to Mike. Next up, Joanne Evans, who was unable to attend tonight. Joanne is retiring after 18 years as a We Care instructor at Hopkins Elementary. Nancy Fitzgerald is retiring after 23 years as a classroom assistant at Garfield. Congratulations to Nancy. Barb Fox, who was unable to attend. Barb is retiring after 22 years working as a classroom assistant and most recently as a library assistant at Ridge Middle School. Congratulations to Barb. Also unable to attend tonight is Debbie Hannah. Debbie is retiring after 11 years as a student supervisor at Mentor High School. Congratulations to Debbie. Barb Hayward, is retiring after 25 years working as a classroom assistant, office aide, and most recently as a library assistant at Mentor High School. Congratulations to Barb. Next up is Art Keener. Is Art here? Art is retiring after 36 years of service and most recently as a material handler for the district. Congratulations to Art. Peggy Kish. Peggy is retiring after 24 years as a classroom assistant, office aide, and most recently as a secretary at Mentor High School. Congratulations to Peggy. Kathy Cavell. Kathy is retiring after 14 years as a classroom assistant and most recently with our students in MRT at Mentor High School. Congratulations to Kathy. Maria Lanice. Maria was unable to attend. She's retiring after 25 years as a classroom assistant, most recently as a library assistant at Memorial. Congratulations to Maria. This one, this one I know is here. Rosemary Lawrence, or Rose Marie, I'll get it eventually. Rose Marie Lawrence, I tell you what, anytime you go into Lake, this is the face that you see. That's gonna be really hard next year. So let me tell you a little bit about Rose Marie. Rose Marie is retiring after 43 years with Mentor Schools, most recently as a secretary at Lake Elementary. Congratulations. Next up is Paulette Lingefelter. Paulette was unable to attend. She's retiring with 25 years as one of our bus operators. Congratulations to Paulette. Ann Mossler. Ann is retiring after 15 years in the School Nutrition Services Department at Memorial. Congratulations Ann. I told Ann I wasn't used to sitting here without an apron on. That's usually how I see her. Also unable to attend tonight is Gary McClintock. Gary is retiring after 31 years as a bus operator with Mentor Schools. Congratulations to Gary. Valerie Minatis. Valerie here? Come on down. Valerie is retiring after 17 years as a bus operator with Mentor Schools. Congratulations Valerie. Holly Nagy. Holly is retiring after 26 years as a bus operator with Mentor Schools. Congratulations to her. Next up is Lee Quaid. Lee is retiring after 10 years as a bus operator with Mentor Schools. Congratulations Lee. Mary Ann Savistano. Mary Ann is retiring after 21 years in school, oh, you snuck up. Gotta be quick. Mary Ann Savistano is retiring after 21 years in School Nutrition Services, most recently at Shore Middle School. Congratulations to Mary Ann. Darlene Skilton was unable to attend. Darlene is retiring after 16 years as a classroom assistant and recently with the Succeed Program at Mentor High School. Congratulations to Darlene. Next up is Laura Tavernier. Laura is retiring after 20, oh, there she is, is retiring after 20 years as a classroom assistant at Garfield Elementary. Congratulations Laura. Carolyn Tompkins. Carolyn is retiring after 26 years as a classroom assistant at Shore Middle School. Congratulations Carolyn. David Weiss. David was able to attend tonight. He's retiring after 10 years as a bus operator with Mentor Schools. And last on my list, and certainly not least, and I know she's here tonight, Donna Whitaker. Donna is retiring after nine years as a secretary, most recently as a classroom assistant at Memorial. Congratulations Donna. If we could give all of our retirees one more round of applause, please. This represents again, a good representation of the 1,123 years of institutional knowledge that we're losing in the district. So congratulations to all of you again. Thank you. Okay, Madam President and Members of the Board, Mentor Schools is incredibly fortunate to have the support of many of our local businesses. Along with Mr. Wilson and Mr. Tuttle, it is my pleasure to recognize the 2017 Ohio School Boards Association Business Honor Roll Award winners. I am honored that many of our members of this group are able to be here this evening. When you're working with a school district, it takes not only parents, teachers, and staff, but also the business leaders, who are also our school community partners in our district. They help us out with business advisory, the Speakers Bureau, the campaigns, and helping us get the word out about our schools, and they're always willing to pitch in. And that's just a few of the things that they do. So I'm gonna recognize if they are here, some were not able to attend, I'm gonna recognize the business, and then one or two members of that business that might be here, if they could come on up and do the same thing we just did with our retirees. First up from Barnes &amp; Noble, Angie Rockbaugh. Angie? Nope. Okay, we thank Barnes &amp; Noble. Cardinal Community Credit Union, Christine Blake. There's Christine. And next up, from the city of Mentor, Mr. Ron Trob. Ron? Ron always says that it's a great day in the city of Mentor, whenever you see him. His license plate is also the car that says "For Mentor," and he really is. So, thank you Ron, really appreciate your work. From Crossroads, who has been a really good partner with Mentor Schools and even more so in the past recent years, Mary Ann Coodieba. From Dollar Bank, Tom Monick. Tom, are you here? We thank them for their work. Freedon Corporation, Mr. Roger Sustar and Allison Scott. Nope. Okay. Great Lakes Mall, Diana Lewis. There's Diana. That's a long walk, isn't it? Unable to attend tonight was Jim Burke, representing Huntington Bank, formerly First Merit. We appreciate their work. Also unable to attend tonight was Mark Fossnot from Keybank. Next up would be the Lake County Development Council, Kirk Stonebrook and Don Huber. Alright. These two gentlemen are here. Can't thank them enough for their support, not just this year, but every single year in the district, from Lake Health, Rick Cicero and Joe Popley. Gentlemen? From Lakeland Community College, Morris Beveridge and Dion Demetrot. I know Morris could not make it, but was not sure about Dion. Okay. Unable to attend tonight, representing the Mentor Area Chamber of Commerce, Al DeFranco. We appreciate their service to the district. From PNC Bank, Heidi Islandfeld. Heidi? Nope. Prelude Photography, Matt Huestead. I have not seen Matt. Okay. Unable to attend tonight from ProMark Enterprises, Pat Perry. From The Rogers Company, Rick Busby. Slice Pizzeria, Mark and Val Gaspar. Mark and Val? Nope. And unable to attend tonight, representing Trivisano CPA, is Pam Trivisano. So congratulations to all of our businesses for their... We certainly couldn't do what we do without all of you, so thank you. Congratulations again to all of our students, staff, and business partners for a job well done.
So at this time, if you didn't wish to stay on for the rest of the business of the meeting, you're welcome to leave. We are going to be adjourning to executive session. If I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Yes, just perps are executive sessions, discuss the appointment of public officials.
And we'll be back to do a vote after the executive session.
And personnel, I believe also.
Yes.
Thank you everyone.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jizlin?
Yes.
Turn to public session. Do we need to call the roll? No. Okay. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. Madam President, Members of the Board, I'm recommending approval of the Agenda Item C1 related to Certified Staff with a change, C2, I'm sorry, C2 to C5, all related to Human Resource Matters, including the C2 addendum that was at your seat this evening, and Agenda Items D through F. The one change I would point out would be that the administrative contracts would be a two-year time period, 2017, 2018, and 2018 to 2019.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jizlin?
Yes.
Thank you. This concludes my part of tonight's agenda.
Thank you. And, Mr. Wilson, the...
Yes.
Business.
We're very pleased that Mary Briner serves on a committee for the Ohio School Boards Association, and they ask us to adopt a resolution that enables them to reimburse her for travel expenses when she's performing her official duties for OSBA. We've prepared a resolution they've requested and asked that you adopt it. Section 6A.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
You need a second?
Second.
And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Ms. Miller? Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jizlin?
Yes.
And then, I think you've got under business number two?
Yes. Ohio Revised Code requires that when we determine to dispose of assets that have a collective value in excess of $10,000, that we must go through a formal auction process with 30-day advance notice, and the board reserves the right to accept or reject the outcome of the auction, and if they determine it's not successful, then can go to private sale as a surplus. A year ago, Matt determined to have a sustainability program for our student devices and get us on a cycle of replacing the machines. We determined there is significant market value to the machines that are being turned over to get in the sequence for annual replacement. This year, we have 671 MacBooks that we are going to offer at auction. We believe the collective value of those could be as much as $300,000. These proceeds then become an important part of the sustainability of student devices. You may recall, we did this last year for the first time, and will become an annual item. So we're asking for the board's authorization to conduct a public auction and authorize me to accept or reject and move to private sale based on the outcome of that auction.
Excellent. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jizlin?
Yes.
And in the legislative report?
Oh, thank you. So, just one topic I want to cover. It's kind of exciting to me, obviously not exciting to some people, but our new superintendent of public instruction, Paulo Di Maria, in March, he panelled several groups in the strategic planning process. In that process, he empanelled a graduation requirements work group. In that work group, they came up with three new suggestions, of course they haven't been passed, to change the graduation requirements. And one of them, and I use the word excitement, but I just want to read this to you. "The first additional recommended pathway is aimed at career technical education students. The criteria for the pathway are as follows. Take all required high school courses and, of course, exams. Complete a career technical education training program approved by ODE. And accomplish one of the following. Earn a recognized industry credential or set of credentials worth at least 12 points. Demonstrate successful workplace participation experience of 250 hours. Documentation by written positive evaluation by workplace and school officials." This falls into that category of the three Es, and you all know what that one E is, employment. So I applaud that work group for that direction. It's a direction in the right direction. We have many kids who come out of school, they're not ready for employment, but they need the opportunity to get that. We have, how many jobs did they just release that are unfilled in the United States as of today? Did anybody read that, hear that story?
No.
Huge. Was it like 500,000 across the country, jobs that are unfilled? Now, where's 500,000? That's the average 10,000 per state. So, that's all I wanted to cover on that subject. It's fantastic. It's moving forward. Recognizing, and I'm not discounting the college education, that's fantastic. I have one. My children, my one daughter does. My wife, partially. Fantastic, fantastic. But college is not for everyone. Employment, enrollment, enlistment. Isn't that right, Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
So, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
With the board's permission, I'd like to hitchhike on the legislative update and get, as it relates to the state budget. I did prepare, as you know, we've been tracking the budget process from its journey that begins in January of every year with the governor introducing a budget, worked its way through the House and the Senate. The Senate version was approved last Friday. It now goes to conference committee with every expectation the final budget be adopted and signed before the end of the fiscal year on June 30th. Even with the challenges of declining state revenues and throughout the process, updated numbers from the Director of the Office of Budget Management, nonetheless, we followed a somewhat historical pattern of every step of the way, things got a little better for K-12 education and for us, and a little better is a relative notion. We're going to lose less than we thought. It's not that we're gaining. We had anticipated in the fiscal projections, a two-year loss of $3,926,000. And based on the governor's proposed budget, that number in the initial proposal jumped Dropped as the budget left the House and went to the Senate to $3,800,000. In the Senate version, the two-year loss will be $3,100,000 greater than we had assumed. So, somewhat historical pattern. Our loss is not in the state subsidy, but rather in the continued phase out of the tangible personal property tax that at one point provided $12 million of local revenues to us, and now will decline to less than $500,000 revenues in the second year of the new biennial budget. We continue to be actively engaged. We had anticipated it, but there'll be some challenges as we prepare this current year's budget and the new forecast in October.
Anything else on legislative? Okay. And your report, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, it's recommend the Board of Education approve the financial statements for the month of May 2017 as presented in Exhibit 7-A.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education ratify the investment transactions listed in Exhibit 7-B.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education approve the inter-fund transfer in advances listed in Exhibit 7-3.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education approve the appropriation modifications listed in Exhibit 7-D.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education approve the supplemental appropriations listed in Exhibit 7-E.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
It's recommend the Board of Education approve the invoices for payment presented in Exhibit 7-F.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
Annually, we're required to consider the tax budget submitted by the Public Library and move it on for consideration by the Lake County Budget Commission. The library has a calendar fiscal year different than our July-through-June year, and again, this year, they've presented their tax budget with the request that we approve and file with the Budget Commission. There's no financial responsibility to the board, but rather part of our oversight of the public library. So, we recommend approval of the Mentor Public Library 2018 tax budget as presented in Exhibit 7-G.
So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Wilson, will you call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes.
That completes my items for this evening.
Does anyone have any unfinished business? New business, we need to establish a special meeting date to authorize the closing of the 2016-17 fiscal year.
The board may recall, this is a somewhat brief meeting, but we're hoping as late in the month as possible, ideally for us, would be June 29th.
I'm available. You said you are available? I'm good that day. I'm good that day also.
We need to also check with Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
And Mr. Porter, yes. Both Williams.
I'm good anytime.
So, this is the 29th you were talking about?
Yes.
Do we have a preference, morning, afternoon?
Prefer the end of the day, either 5:00, 5:30.
5:30 is good for me.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
And we'll confirm with...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what time.
5:30 PM. Thank you for that.
And then...
At the board office?
Yes. Be in the Cardinal Conference Room.
Hearing of the public. Anyone wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board. I just wanted to make a comment... Oh, I'm sorry. I always forget. I apologize. Don't do this that often. Michelle Pugh, I am at 5365 Snell Drive in Mentor. I have two children in the high school, and I'm very involved in the schools, several different roles. So, I wanted to make a comment, first of all, I wanted to thank you for a great choice for our interim superintendent. I've heard a lot of positive feedback, and we're very excited for that. But I did want to ask a question because I did not see anything on the agenda or had, or anything mentioned about where we go from here. So, I guess a few of my questions would be surrounding, you know, are we still contracted with Finding Leaders? And in the last couple of weeks, I had looked online to see if the position was still there or had been reposted, and it was. I'm not really sure if it is right now. Haven't looked recently. But we kind of wanted to know, where do we go from here? What is, do you have an action plan? Do you have an agenda? Do we, you know, is there anything? Do we need to keep them as our search firm? Can we think outside of the box and maybe try something else? You know, I was a headhunter at one point for a couple of years. I know it, when it was not for anything with the public schools, but I used my resources, and I kind of feel that we haven't used our resources appropriately or enough. So, I guess that was kind of my question.
So, in order to address that, we would have a statement for their next meeting?
Thank you. We'll have a statement prepared to address your questions at our next meeting in July.
Okay. All right. If I could make one more comment, I just wanted to let you know that there are many, many people, and I know you don't see many people here right now, but there are many people in the community that want to help you. We don't want to, you to feel like you were abandoned all of a sudden, and, you know, this is all going to be on you. We really want to help. And there are a lot of members that want to do that, so we would love to do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right. Motion to adjourn?
Second. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jisling?
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.